Newport Beach City Council Study Session is called to order. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
First item of business, clarification of items on the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I, on item seventeen, I believe that the second recommendation doesn't necessarily comport with what the Aviation Committee requested. And I would like to suggest that the action be modified slightly so that item B, an analysis of whether altitudes upon departure have changed over the last seven years, is changed to say whether noise abatement procedures are still being followed. And if those NADPs are not, would there be significant noise impacts to local receptors by reinstating them?
Okay, thank you. So Dave, Mr. Kiff, so you've so noted, or how would you like to respond?
So, Mr. Petrus, I wonder if you could say that again. I'm hearing it, because we know that not all the noise abatement departures are followed, they don't need to be followed. You can fly out of John Wayne without doing the close-in departure. Are you, were you more interested in seeing if the distant versus the close-in departure should be studied as a result of what we learned with altitudes?
The, the conversation that was had at the Aviation Committee, to which you were in attendance, revolved around the notion that staff suggested that the higher altitude alternatives could be presented to John Wayne Airport and the FAA if, in fact, we found that there was no significant effect or no demonstrable effect on noise and emission to sensitive receptors right at the end of the airway.
That's more clear. If, if that's what you'd like be to say, I understand that.
That's what I would, that's what the Aviation Committee would like.
Thanks.
Okay, so, Mr. Kiff, when we get to the consent in the full, regular meeting, then we'll...
I'll, I'll mention that, yeah, at the regular meeting. Thanks.
Very good. All right, moving on to study session item number two, possible changes to the OCTA bus routes in Newport Beach. So, staff, do you have a report?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, council members. We do have a short report for you, and then we have representatives from the Orange County Transportation Authority here today to talk about their Bus 360 Plan revisions. Real quick, opening this item up, I just wanted to advise, too, that over the years, the Technical Advisory Committee, which is made up of public works directors and city engineers from the various cities, has worked with OCTA to try to encourage efficiencies in their bus system, obviously keeping those resources for other types of things like our roads. Some of that has to play in today as they've gone ahead and they've been looking at their routes and looking for opportunities to improve efficiencies, ridership, and time of travel. Real quickly, we have a couple routes in our city that they're actually proposing to have some effects to. Route seventy-six is a route coming over from Huntington Beach, going through John Wayne Airport, and going into Newport Center, and they're proposing to eliminate that route. Route seventy-nine starts up in Tustin, comes back down through Newport Center, and they're looking to do some frequency improvements. I'm guessing that has to do with time of travel and making it more efficient. We haven't had too much requests or discussion on that, so I wanted to turn my attention tonight about the Peninsula Route, which, in this case, there is a change in the Peninsula, and we have had some comments and concerns from residents. Real quickly, before we go into that, I want to just kind of point out a couple things on the Peninsula and how we have public transportation opportunities. As we mentioned, there are two bus routes on the Peninsula, Route seventy-one and Route forty-seven. This is regularly scheduled fare service that runs up and down the Peninsula and stops at various points. You also have, which you've seen before, the Downtowner, which is a private organization that runs a public service, and you can have a free lift if you use the app, and it takes you in various places in the Peninsula area. There's also options like Uber, Lyft, and taxi, and other hail-type demand services if you want to use that mobility. And then, of course, you have biking and walking, which is very popular on the Peninsula, and we have great access level trails, the oceanfront boardwalk. And then, one other one you saw in January, we're looking at having a proposed shuttle service we're looking into, and the city's filed an application currently with OCTA, and that's in review. That would run on summer weekends and be a free service, basically subsidized by the city and OCTA. With that, the two bus routes that run on the Peninsula are Route seventy-one, and this travels from Yorba Linda and goes all the way down to Baboa Pier. And OCTA is proposing to terminate this route at Triangle Square as it comes down. And the reasons for that are basically low ridership in their eye when they did the evaluation of this. Route forty-seven comes out of Fullerton and works its way down and goes to the Newport Pier, stops at Twenty-third Street. Originally proposed, they weren't going to do any changes to this route, it'd stay intact. We've worked with OCTA just recently, and they've proposing a modification to this route, and what they propose to do in result of the elimination of the Route seventy-one leg to Baboa Village, they would continue this route from Twenty-third Street all the way down to Baboa Village. It's a small extension, I think that's a nice compromise to keep providing service to Baboa Village. So that's currently the plan they have right now to go forward, just so you can see these routes and for the public. This is Route seventy-one, we cut it short, but it, again, it starts up there in Yorba Linda coming down. You can see that last leg there, right here is the portion to be eliminated, going from a, actually, I'm sorry, this one, eliminated from Triangle Square all the way down to the village. And then Route forty-one, coming down from Fullerton, actually comes down Baboa and goes to Twenty-third Street now. This is the one they recently suggested what they do is they'll go ahead and tag on that leg back going down to Baboa Village, so it's still serviced by bus service. So with that, why don't I go right into OCTA and their presentation? They have a short presentation for you. Tony, if you could click out of this and bring up their presentation, that's the PDF. And with us today is Gary Hewitt with OCTA and Andrea West, and they're going to go through their Bus 360 Plan.
Is it better if I stand here or there? Is it better? Is this, is that one okay, too? Or, okay. This one's tough, yeah. Good evening, my name is Gary Hewitt, I'm the manager of transit non-motorized planning with the Orange County Transportation Authority. And thank, thank you for the opportunity to come here and present and give you some context about our OC Bus 360 initiative and the proposed bus service changes in the city of Newport Beach and also throughout the county. So for some context, this is a, a chart that shows our bus ridership trend over the last, well, going all the way back to the beginning, going back to nineteen seventy-three, we've been operating OCTA bus service for just, just over forty years. And this chart shows our historic ridership on an annual basis. The state where we are right now is our, our boardings on an annual basis have declined back to nineteen ninety-six levels. And if you go far enough back, actually back to nineteen ninety-two, we had a, a little bubble there where the ridership declined during the bankruptcy, we, we had to decrease service. But then you see kind of a log, the, starting in the late nineties, ridership grew, 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 and then in two thousand eight, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, that was kind of the peak of our transit ridership in the county. And we needed to reduce bus service in order to deal with declining revenues for transit, and our revenues are tied closely to sales tax. And we had to decrease about twenty percent of our bus service, and with that, our ridership also decreased about twenty percent. There's a period from about two thousand ten to two thousand twelve where our ridership remained flat, and, and at the end of two thousand twelve, there was even signs that it was starting to, to grow again. Our thoughts initially were that ridership would return as the economy turned around. We attributed, we attributed our ridership loss between two thousand eight and two thousand ten mostly to the decline in the, in the job market, a lot of unemployment and general reduction in, in travel during that time period. But, starting late in two thousand twelve, we started to see our ridership decline. We did do a fare increase in February two thousand thirteen from a dollar fifty to two dollars on our cash fare. And then, pretty much over the last three years, our ridership has been declining on a year-over-year, month-to-month basis. And we're down another about ten percent from, from two thousand twelve. And so, we're really in a position now where we need to do something. Our revenue from our fare box is declining, our productivity is down, which is another indicator that we look at, how many people we carry per hour. So I, I mentioned nineteen ninety-six ridership levels, we're running about twenty percent more bus service today than we did in nineteen ninety-six. So we, the efficiency is, has dropped quite a bit. And so, we, we really needed to kind of sit down and try to figure out what was happening with, with our bus ridership, and come up with a series of initiatives, and, and our, our goal is to try to reverse the ridership decline and start growing ridership again. So, the OC Bus 360 Program, it encompasses more than just the bus service plan that we're going to talk about today. We're also looking at ways in order to try to attract people to our system, and I'll talk a little bit about those on the next slide. But the goal of the service plan is really to try to meet customer needs. We've done a lot of surveys of our existing riders, our former riders, as well as non-riders, and the thing that, that keeps coming up is speed. So we talk to people, they say, "The speed of the bus, bus service isn't competitive with the automobile." And there's two kind of attributing factors to that, one of which is actually the speed of the route, which is in, you know, relation to how long it takes us to get down the street and, and stop and pick up and passengers, and also transfer. So we, we have a grid system that are generally in the central part of the county where most of our bus service is, and, you know, people need to transfer between routes to make a trip, and, and that could be quite a time penalty. So, those are two things that we're looking to try to improve as part of the service plan. We want to kind of reposition our bus service to match any changes to the travel markets, and as I had mentioned, try to increase productivity. So one of the measures we use is boardings per hour, that's kind of the, the gold standard for, for bus service. Traditionally, we've, we've carried thirty-three to thirty-five boardings per hour. Recently, we dropped, we dipped under thirty boardings per hour. An important factor also is working within existing funding, though we're not having big shortfalls in funding at this point. Besides the revenue side, we're looking at what we could do with an existing funding to basically reallocate service from areas of lower productivity, lower ridership, to areas of higher productivity, higher ridership, to try to reverse that ridership decline. If we were to do nothing, we'd be in the position where back to where we were in two thousand eight, where we'd be looking at just decreasing bus service or increasing fares. So this service plan generally reallocates about ten percent of our bus service from lower productivity routes to higher productivity routes. So in addition to what we're planning to do in terms of changes to the bus service, this is just a slide showing some of the other initiatives that were currently underway in order to try to attract people to our system. One is, we, we're rebranding, we're now changing the name of our service from OCTA to OC Bus. We're still OCTA, but the service we know is OC, OC Bus, and that, in the slides throughout here, you'll see what that looks like. We're receiving two hundred new buses, and as those come in, those will be painted with the new color scheme and logo, and we'll do some limited rebranding of the rest of our fleet. Real-time customer information, we've been working with app developers and Google Maps and Apple to provide our information so that when you, when you do an itinerary in one of their applications, it provides information about transit, and we've, and last year done a lot in terms of providing real-time information, so we provide the location of our buses to these providers, and they're able to provide real-time arrival information to, to customers. And we also updated our texting service to add this functionality. Another thing we're really excited about is mobile ticketing, so one of the big impediments people taking transit is getting over the, the friction of getting on the bus and paying, a lot of people don't feel comfortable with that. So we're developing a mobile app that we'll be launching in the spring, initially with college and express routes, which will allow people to purchase a mobile ticket on their phone and then show it to the driver as they board the bus. We're doing an overall fare study, so we're looking at our fares, we had that fare increase in two thousand thirteen, we think that there's some opportunities to do some things with the fare in order to try to stimulate ridership by creating some, either new fares or reducing some fares. We did a peer review, so we brought in experts from around the country through the American Public Transportation Association to come and look at our service and make recommendations. A lot of the service recommendations are in tune with what was found in that study. And then, the Project B, which is something you guys are interested in and looking at, that's another opportunity that we have now that we didn't have before, to bring new resources in to transit service in areas to supplement the existing OCTA bus service and the proposed changes to our route structure. So, we'll talk about the process that we went through to try to solicit input. The biggest kind of source of input is from our existing customers, and we, we, we produce these brochures and put them on all of our, our buses, sixty thousand of these were printed so that we could get information out to the public. The board approved us taking the service plan out to the public in late November, and we, we also did meetings like this, we've presented a number of city council meetings, community meetings as requested. We had four community meetings at OCTA and other facilities where we brought in the public to provide comments. We had a website dedicated to the project and had a public hearing on January twenty-fifth. And this is just showing how many comments we got, so we did get a lot of comments. As of the end of our public hearing, we got over thirteen hundred comments regarding the proposals that we made. Some of the reoccurring themes, obviously people supported the improvements, and we're not so happy about the, the reallocations or reductions. A lot of the comments we got about the reductions is, "Yeah, we understand there's not a lot of people on this bus, but can you just leave some bus service, whether it's hourly or just peak service?" There's also concerns about the Project V and being able to kind of sync up the end date for a bus route to the starting date of a Project V route, that's something that we're gonna, we plan on addressing. And also, concerns for special needs customers, so these are people who take our access pair of transit who could be impacted by the change in our bus service area, as well as disabled and elderly passengers who use our bus service. So, we did listen to the public, we have fourteen changes to the original thirty-five proposals that we made. This is, this is kind of hot off the presses, I think the email went out today regarding this, to the cities, and we're taking this to our Transit Committee this Thursday and our board later this month. So this is just a summary, and I'll, I'll point out, as discussed, our proposal to, to address the, the loss of service on a part of the Peninsula would be to take Route forty-seven and extend every, every, one trip an hour down to the, to the Baboa Pier area. As, to do that, we're going to reduce the frequency slightly on Route forty-seven, we plan to do this seven days a week. That's kind of the biggest change as it impacts Newport Beach. We got a lot of comments from those access riders, and we're making some accommodations. This doesn't impact, we, there's no changes to the access service area within the city of, of Newport Beach, or it's, or it's, it's very, very minor, and we, we have a map that could show that. But one of the pieces of feedback that we received was, we, we have an option for people who live outside of the access service area called same-day taxi, and they're able to take a, a taxi, and we, we, they pay the access fare, and they could go up to five miles for, for that, for that amount. And then after that, they pay the, they pay the extra amount above the, whatever the meter rate is. So customers told us that that may work for them, but they need the hours extended, and also, there's kind of a transfer penalty. So what people could do is they could use the same-day taxi service, come into the access area, get on an access van, but it would, they basically had to pay two fares, three dollars and sixty cents twice, and for people who are elderly or on fixed incomes, that's, that's a big hurdle. So, we're recommending to our board to, to waive the, the transfer, the second fee for a period of eighteen months. So this is a chart showing what we think the impacts will be to riders throughout the county, and some of the benefits of the plan. So we're adding four peak high-frequency routes, these are routes that come every fifteen minutes or more, so we plan on expanding the number we have from eleven to fifteen. We're adding new Bravo routes, we're doing Route five sixty on Westminster Seventeenth with our June service change. And we're recommending pushing back the implementation of Five twenty-nine, which is on Beach Boulevard, as part of the final recommendations in order to study that a little bit further and to seek external funding for the initial operations and capital for that route. We anticipate that the growth in boardings by making these changes will be about one point three to one point nine million boardings after three years after they get a chance to kick in and, and have additional riders. In the final service plan, we did reduce the negative impacts. Initially, about four percent of riders would, would lose service, and we were able to reduce that number to two percent. There were associated reductions in how many routes we improved frequency to, and how many people would have no change to their route. This chart just shows the original percentage and what it was before we made the final This is just a slide showing the, the process and the schedule. So we had the public hearing, we're submitting the final plan and recommendations to our board on the twenty-second and to the Transit Committee this Thursday, and we plan to come back to our board in June with an update on the Project V circulators. By that time, we will, we will receive applications and evaluated them, and we'll be able to look at that other issue of kind of syncing up the start and end dates. And the bottom part here just shows, this is more inside stuff for us, but it's showing that in June, June twelfth will be the initial service change, where we plan to be actually net increasing service, and then in October, we plan on a slight reduction in service, and then with the addition of the Bravo, when that comes online, it'll be a net increase of annual revenue hours. So, that concludes my presentation, and available for any questions you might have.
Well, thank you very much. Do we have any questions up here? Mr. Pianar?
Yeah, and your Route forty-seven, you're going to cut it back. Right now, it goes twice an hour, and you're going to cut it back to once an hour?
Routes, Route forty-seven, we're extending, Route seventy-one is the one that we're, we're cutting back. And I believe that that route during the peak comes every forty-five minutes, let me confirm that just to, yeah, it's forty-five minutes. The rest of the route's going to be improved to thirty minutes, so the north part, north of Triangle Square, is going to be improved to thirty minutes. So the, the effective frequency change for people south of Baboa and Twenty-third will be from forty-five minutes to sixty minutes.
And how many riders are we talking about?
So the, they, I was talking to Tony, they did an excellent job of summarizing the ridership impacts in the staff report, but I think about fifty people ride it each direction per day. So fifty people coming south into that area, fifty people coming north out of that area, fifty boardings.
And is that mostly AM and PM, like, people that are working down in that area and then go home at night, or are these beachgoers, do you know?
So the ridership that we looked at is averaged over an entire year, so it's going to have beachgoers in there. You know, usually, it's going to be, most routes, about half of our ridership is people going to work overall. I don't have the specific numbers for this route.
So, your original proposal was to, to delete it at Triangle Square, now you're going to just minimize the service down there?
Though we're still proposing to delete Route seventy, seventy-one at Triangle Square, and we're proposing to take forty-seven trips that now terminate at Baboa and Twenty-third and extend them down to the Baboa Pier area, every, every hour. So, there's, that's, extending Route forty-seven picks up that kind of missing piece of the, of Route, Route seventy-one. Both routes ran, ran on Newport-Baboa before, so there we had, we had kind of two routes running. Now there'll just be one route coming down. Most of the trips will start, stop at Baboa and Twenty-third, and then every hour, the trips will extend all the way down to the, to Baboa Pier.
If, if most of the riders are people that work there, are they eight-to-five kind of employees, or do you know? Do you know frequency?
I don't.
You just know numbers per day?
Yeah, that's all I have with me right now, is numbers per day.
Average numbers.
Yeah, that's something we could provide to staff, we can provide kind of the hourly boardings in that area.
So you're looking at, even with the reduced service, still servicing the same number, it's just going to take those people longer, or they're going to have to work their schedules around the new schedule?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Curry?
Good presentation. What's the fare box recovery ratio for OCTA sort of system-wide?
We, our target is to be above twenty percent, and that includes our fixed route service and our pair of transit. As of the last, as of the last fiscal year, we, we're actually going to start to, as of this current fiscal year, we're, we're going to be dipping under that, so we need to get it back up. And traditionally, what we did in two thousand twelve, or two thousand thirteen was we raised the fares to do that, so...
And, and so it's safe to say that the, that the routes that are being proposed for reduction are probably well below your average of a twenty percent fare box recovery?
Correct. Those routes, those routes are closer to twelve to fifteen percent fare box recovery.
Right, which means that for every dollar it costs to operate them, there is a subsidy of, you know, eighty-eight cents from someplace other than the rider that's being used to do that. And it's easy for everybody to sort of become a big fiscal conservative on, on services that don't affect them, and then when it affects our town to say, "Well, you can't cut that, don't cut that." But I think the OCTA ought to be applauded for taking the leadership and finding ways to make itself more efficient, and we need to, to face the, the reality that transit in Newport Beach carries about, as I, last time I saw, about point four or five percent, or half, or half of one percent of the trips in our city. And so for that, I think the OCTA deserves credit for trying to find more innovative ways of using different strategies, different types of equipment, different vendors, to provide mobility services. And I applaud that action and encourage you to continue it.
Any other comments?
Thank you, excellent presentation. Just some further points of clarification, on the revised Route forty-seven, you have these arrows going over to Newport Boulevard from Baboa, would there be a little jump over there, right up there, on Twenty-eighth Street to Newport to Twenty-third?
So, on those trips that don't go all the way down, that they would still use that routing, I believe they use that routing to get the bus turned around. So, on the trips that would go all the way till Baboa, those would have the Baboa routing, and there's a little loop at the end of that route near the pier.
And could you describe the Bravo program for me, please?
Sure. The Bravo is a, it's a rapid bus service, so it's a limited-stop bus service. We, we introduced the first route in two thousand thirteen on Harbor Boulevard. It's a limited-stop bus route, so instead of stopping about every quarter-mile, the bus stops every three-quarters of a mile. The buses are branded differently, and they have a simplified schedule for operations that makes it easy for new users to understand. And we're looking at other ways to be, other things that we could do with that route, and we, we did some additional signage, we're looking at other things down the line like signal priority or off-vehicle fare collection, things like that, to try to speed the service up. But by reducing the, the number of stops, and we're really just stopping at the major cross streets where a majority of the boardings happen anyways, we're able to save twenty to twenty-five percent of the travel time. So, our existing customers like it, and the intention is that it would attract new customers due to the increased, or the decreased travel time.
Very good. Well, to follow up on your point on new customers, I represent the Baboa Peninsula and the economic development that is occurring as we speak. We have a new hotel that's going to be opening up in about a year and a half. It's very important to the hotel to have bus service for their workers, that's part of their traffic and parking management plan. We have another mixed-use development around the Newport Pier area, Twenty-third Street, which would have employees, workers, as, as well as other patrons who are interested in coming down to the Peninsula. Baboa Village is, and our new Marina Park. So we have, when those studies, when your ridership studies were done, obviously, they couldn't take into consideration what is projected to occur on the Peninsula in the years and months ahead. So I'm very heartened by the fact that we'll retain the bus service and hopefully intensify its use with this and the proposed shuttle, if that goes forward, because I think the demand, which we know has declined over the past period of time, will accelerate with this, when these new developments come online. So it will be exciting to see the impact with the transportation system, so thank you very much. If there are no other questions up here, why don't we go to the public? Any comments from the public, please, come forward.
Evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. I'm Scott Robinson, I'm representing the Central Newport Beach Community Association, which is primarily impacted by the elimination of the seventy-one route, or in a... impacted by the elimination of the 71 route or being terminated at Triangle Square. Obviously, I wasn't aware that the 47 was going to be extended down there, so that's great news and I want to thank the OCTA for that. Just one question I have in regards to that. If the 71 terminates at Triangle Square, would that person that gets off at Triangle Square be able to pick up the 47? And I don't need to respond right now. But clearly, the 71 is a very important part of transportation to and from or on and off the peninsula for people that live and work there and for those that don't drive or own a vehicle or for visitors to our area. And we've had public transportation all the way down to Balboa for decades and decades. So I just wanted to ensure that the council understands that we are very pro maintaining the public transportation and would want your support moving forward in that regard. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This may seem only tangentially related to the current topic, but I, it seemed like a good occasion to mention on the route that I take coming here to the city council meetings, which is going down Dover Drive and then turning towards here on Coast Highway. I noticed that a couple of months ago, the bus stop which we have at the entrance to our Castaways Park, stop is still there, but the bus shelter and the seating and the trashcan that were there mysteriously disappeared. And then when you go over the Upper Bay Bridge to where the future Back Bay landing may be, there's still a bus stop there, but it's been downgraded to such an extent, the trashcan there, I believe also taken away. You'd only know it if you looked up at the post and saw the little OCTA sign. I don't know if those are just temporary glitches and something better is coming along, but it seemed to me inconsistent with the idea of trying to encourage more ridership from our residents and visitors to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
W.R. Dill Dean, I'll get on the bus tomorrow morning at 7:15 to make it to Hoag. That's, I'm thrilled to death what I see. I am absolutely amazed that they have continued all these years with the bus 71 down to Balboa. I'm up every morning, 4 to 5 o'clock. I see that 5:30 bus, no service, turn around, go back, empty. But later on during the day, there are a handful, depending on when your doctor's appointment is, that use that bus to get to Hoag. You can, this way, I feel now, I can get to all my doctors. You can get to Chalk, you can get to St. Joe's, everything, South County I haven't cared about. But the only one I have concern with right now is myself and I have to relook. I take this to make, to schedule my appointments, to know when, at what time I can make a bus connection. If I have to wait an hour or so afterwards, fine. But is the medical complex, I think it's the Fountain Valley, where the eye institute used to be USC and I have to, it's now UCLA. I didn't want to go there until all my doctors left SC and moved over there. But you're shy a couple of blocks of Brookhurst and maybe there's some other way. The majority of the people that I think are really going to be upset or would have been upset were those, the domestic workers and the restaurant employees. And to run that bus as many times a day empty has cost the taxpayers money. But I do approve this new route with 47. I was happy to say, see that they can block out some of the trips. It's not necessary, particularly in the winter months. They may find demand in the summer months, but with the trolley and that, it's put, just hope we shorten them up. But I approve everything. But I am, main concern is I'm wondering about getting to the Fountain Valley Medical because that's Parkinson and eyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, coming back up here. Yes, Mr. Petros.
Thank you. I too would just like to offer some observations. The notion of OCTA trying to become more efficient with the taxpayer dollars has been really in effect for years. There was outside, I won't call it an audit, but a survey by an independent who came back and reinforced the, pardon me, reinforced the notion of the good works that you're trying to do here. Become more efficient with fare box and the taxpayer dollar. I think it's instructive for us to note that we are engaged with OCTA right now with the Project V proposal, one that would come alongside a Route 47 plan, one that would be our own plan and would augment the service that's currently being done by OCTA. If we're talking about the wise and efficient expenditure of public dollars, then let's try our own first and see how we do as a supplementation for the service that OCTA does. I would also just add too that the reference to the 53 trips were, those surveys were conducted from June to October at the height of activity down on the peninsula during summer. So if we were going to capture the universe of all potential users, whether they be the restaurant employees or the hotel employees or visitors or whomever, we would have captured them all. And that's one board and a light, one board and a light a day at each stop. That's not a wise use of that very valuable resource. So I think we can do better. I think our Project V will show that. And I just thank you for the work that you've done on this.
Any other comments? Mr. Pieter, did you have something? No? Okay. Mr. Webb, yes?
Sorry, one staff follow-up comment to Mr. Pieter's comment. Gary, if you could look at the connection of 47 and 71, they don't currently connect now and there may be a stream of ridership coming down 71 that could connect easily to the new 47 and get down the, they're not too far up, looks like a block or two, but you might want to look at a connection there to enhance ridership. Sorry, excuse me.
Well, thank you. Well, and thank you for the presentation and reacting so swiftly to the concerns of residents. I think this all kind of came around in the last few weeks, so I appreciate that as a representative of the Balboa Peninsula, so thank you. So do we need to do anything more formal here, Mr. Kiff, in terms of endorsing the action that's, OCTA has already taken?
I think that's how we'd set up the nighttime action, which is at the end of your agenda tonight. We'd support the extension of the 47 with, I think with Mr. Webb's good caveat that there be some connection at Triangle Square, and I think that would be the city's position going forward unless you folks object it.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you very much. All right. Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Any public comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher, and I have two non-agenda comments I want to make. The first is about the city's water conservation goal. While it's heartening to know that precipitation has returned to normal in much of California, we still have a state mandated cutback to meet. And until that changes, you've asked for a status report at the second meeting of each month. This is the first report from your last meeting, and as you know, the city's goal is for a 28% cutback, which we were told would be achieved if the private customers could cut back by 25% because the city could pick up the slack cutting back its own water use even more than the private customers. I don't know if you've read this report, but when I looked at it, and I may be misinterpreting it, I was shocked to learn that the city seems to be one of the worst scofflaws. It says that a third of the city-controlled irrigation systems, only one-third, have met the cutback target, and of the 73 city buildings with water service, only 19 have met the goal. That seems to me pretty dismal, so I hope that the report at your next meeting will attach some gallon figures to these statistics to give us a clearer picture of whether the city is helping or hurting the effort and how much more leeway it would have to cut back. Another concern of mine is the many acre-feet of what our water management plan says is unaccounted for water that the city purchases each month, but is unable to explain exactly where it goes to. My understanding is that that mystery water comprises more gallons than all of the city's school and other government buildings put together. And so I think that too deserves a better explanation. The second thing I wanted to speak about unrelated to this is something that slipped through on the consent calendar at your last meeting, meeting before last. It had to do with allowing the City Arts Commission to do fundraising. As you know, we have a council policy that generally prohibits that, but allows you, the council, to waive the prohibition for specified projects. My comment is having a policy that clearly says one thing and then having that overridden by an obscure notation in the minutes from some long ago council meeting is very poor public policy. It seems obvious to me that if you wanted different rules to apply to the City Arts Commission, those rules should be clearly written and should be in the policy itself where everyone can see them and know what the rules are. That would require the adoption of a resolution, and I think you should do that and debate the merit of it more fully than you did before. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned to closed session. Thank you.
The city council adjourned to closed session to discuss agenda item 4A and B, including meeting to discuss the performance of the council appointees, Dave Kiff, city manager, Aaron Harp, city attorney, and Alani Brown, city clerk, as well as meeting with Council Mayor Petros to discuss labor negotiations with the council appointees. The council appointees will not participate in the labor negotiations given their financial interest in the negotiations.
The regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council will now be called to order. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. There's no closed session report this evening.
Mr. Pieter, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by our invocation by Pastor Jim Domann of the California Family Council?
Thank you. If you'd all rise, put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me as I pray? Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening. Thank you for this amazing city of Newport Beach. God, it's just an incredible location and place, Lord, where the ocean, the beach and the hills just speak to your majesty. Lord, I'm grateful for the Newport Beach Police Department. Lord, I pray that you'd continue to bless Chief Jay and the entire department, Lord, and as well as the fire department and the other city servants, Lord, that serve this city day in and day out. Lord, I also want to lift up our council members this evening, and as your word says in James, "If anyone lacks wisdom, he will give to them generously." And Lord, I don't ask because they lack, but you have more than what we do. And I pray that you would bestow that upon each member. The mayor, Dixon, Mayor Protem, Willdo, council members, Pieter, Duffield, Solich, Curry, and Petros. God, I pray you would bless them, their families, and their service to this great city. We just ask that you would be here this night, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
And Madam Clerk?
Now is the time for city council announcements.
Mr. Petros?
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. I had two quick announcements just of upcoming meetings. On the 11th, this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM, there will be a meeting that the Air Quality Management District will be holding regarding the Hickson Industries compliance measures for the hexavalent chromium issue. They have an air quality issue. There has been a couple of meetings already held. If you are on the west side of town or are concerned about air pollutants on the west side of town, I strongly encourage you to attend that meeting. Mr. Kiff, it's located at Hoag?
It's at the Hoag Conference Center, so the lower campus there by PH.
So enter, thank you. Enter off of Coast Highway at the Lido Sands Signal. It is at the conference center there at 6:00 on the 11th. And then finally, on the 17th, the city and I will be hosting an open house to gain input on the West Newport Master Plan. We're looking at some zoning and public realm improvements over on the west side of town up adjacent to Superior. Very exciting planning effort underway to really create a vibrancy in anticipation of some new opportunities over on the west side, those that would match and complement the existing residents there. So again, if you have an interest in the west side of Newport Beach or live in the west side, I strongly encourage you to join us on the 17th at the Newport Beach Gymnasium located at 881 15th Street. That's 881 15th Street on the 17th of February. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Curry? Mr. Solich?
I have no items.
Mr. Pieter? Mr. Duffield? Mayor Protem, Willdo? Okay, I have a few. I'll make up for all that. I'll make up for all that. One item to agendize, I'd ask the city manager to place an item on the February 23rd agenda that would state the council's intent to encourage the County of Orange to consider a 50-year term lease for a proposed lease with the new owners of the Newport Beach Golf Course. I believe that a long-term golf course and open space use of this land near John Wayne Airport is essential, would be essential for the long-term protection of our community. Some announcements, first of all, I'd like to thank the community and all those who attended the mayor's dinner last week, and thanks, special thanks, to Speak Up Newport and the dinner chairs Debbie Allen, Kathy Harrison, and Janice Dinwiddie for a spectacular and memorable evening at the lovely Newport Marriott last Thursday. It was a special evening, and I appreciate all those who were there. It was, it was a lot of fun. Number three, a reminder, this Thursday at 6:30 in the community room across the way, I'll have my first mayor's town hall. I encourage all of you to come. We start promptly and end promptly at 8:00, and we'll have some members of the staff there to answer questions and just update everyone with news of the city. Also, on February 25th, also in the community room at 5:30 to 7:30, is Women in Newport Networking. It's a new summit conference to encourage men and women, but especially women, to, because we have a shortage of women serving in appointed positions in the city, and they're plentiful in our nonprofit organizations. We've partnered with 14 nonprofit organizations in our community to showcase the path forward to becoming more involved in our civic affairs. So I encourage anyone who's interested to come Thursday, February 25th at 5:30. And also, this next slide will showcase some demolition going on on the peninsula, long-awaited improvements, Newport Boulevard, and this is the old Blockbuster video. And if you had some tapes that you hadn't returned, it's now too late. Old Betamax tapes, as Dave Kiff said today. So this is a good sign that things are happening on the peninsula, and infrastructure and public works are going to be busy. Some apologies to our residents who live off Finley Avenue. There, there is a little bit of a dislocation for a few days, but by the weekend or the end of, through the weekend, Mr. Webb is nodding his head, it will be back to normal pretty much. So thank you very much, Mr. Webb and your team. And I think that's it on my announcement. So Madam Clerk? Thank you for doing double duty.
Now is the time for matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda.
Mr. Pieter, go ahead.
My item's the second item on there, and it's regarding, there's 100 units that have, were approved with the general plan man back in 2006 and the development agreements, et cetera, in Newport Center, and there's a couple of competing proposals for that. And since most of the people on the council weren't here when that was approved, what I'd like to do is bring that back to a study session, if possible, two meetings from now, and show us or explain and allow the council to understand where the 100 units came from, because there's some community concern that there's development occurring that isn't allowed, and it's been prompted by, I think, Todd Ridgway's proposal on the old Beacon Bay Station, but because there's an Orange County Museum of the Art counterproposal going on, I think it'd just be appropriate just to update the council as far as where they came from and give us a little bit of history, allow us to ask some questions. And then on top of that, I want to throw a third wrench into the works, and that is, you know, we talked about the police station needs to be replaced at some point. Well, one of the things that would help us defray the cost is if we got maximum value for their existing Santa Barbara site, and putting 100 units on that would maximize its value. So I wanted to at least have the staff address how that would work if we decided to do it and what kind of value that might bring back. So anyway, that's the issue that I want to bring forth in a study session.
Is that, is there a timing that you're looking at? What period does?
Well, two, I don't think staff can probably pull it together in one, in just one meeting. I'd rather wait two meetings, if there's no scheduling conflicts with anything else.
Okay. Do we need a motion to approve that? Yes, I do. Do we have a motion?
I'll move both of the items.
And a second? No? Okay, fails for lack of a second?
I'm sorry, what's going on? Normally, we just say, hey, show hands, and as long as there's three hands, city manager does it. But I'd be glad to make a motion to put both of these on a future agenda. There's two items. One of them is Mayor Dixon's request to put on...
But we're, I think we're treating them separately as two different items right now, so we're just dealing with your, your matter, Mr. Pieter. So is it in the form of a motion and a second? Do we have a second?
Mr. Pieter's motion fails for lack of a second.
All right. So moving on to the other item that I have put, Mr. Harp?
Just briefly, we should take public comment at some point on it, just give the public an opportunity if they had anything they wanted to say.
All right, let me make my motion, and then we can take comments on both of those. So I'm agendized to open up the Planning Commission to televised, recorded televised meeting for the Planning Commission that has been requested. So those, that is one item, followed by the other item. So let's open it up for public discussion. Any comments?
Thank you for suggesting that we televise the Planning Commission meetings. I really appreciate that, and I hope everybody will support the mayor on that one.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Okay, let's bring it back.
Is there a second? I didn't hear if there's a second to your motion, ma'am.
Well, I'll make the motion for my motion. Is there a second to televised hearings for the Planning Commission?
I'll second it.
Okay. Let's vote.
So just to be clear for the public, this is whether to bring this back as a formal agenda item with costs, and so the council's not really approving it today, they're approving, discussing it next time.
On a future agenda, yes.
With council, with Mayor Protem Muldoon and council member Solich voting no, the motion carries 5-2.
Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 17. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each of the items for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Now, Steph, are you pulling?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item eight has to do with the city would, if eight was approved, the city would file a coastal development permit application for the Sunset Ridge Park parking lot and access road. I am asking that that item not be heard tonight. It would be continued to a future meeting, and a number of reasons for that, including that a number of residents felt like they didn't get adequate notice, and I'm respectful for that, of that. And so that would be my recommendation on item eight.
And then, Mr. Webb, did you want to clarify on item number seven? Was there anything we needed to know on that?
Actually, there's just a revised resolution in your packet tonight. We had a couple wording changes, so you'll see that in front of you.
Okay, so I'll ask the council. Mr. Petros, any items? Mr. Curry?
I'd like to pull the minutes, item one.
And to pull, however, there is a clarification on 17 that I am hopeful that the city manager can refer.
Can manage to restate? I think I can. Thanks. What, Madam Mayor?
To restate?
Do you want me to go on 17? So 17, if that stays on the consent calendar, your, your action would be under B to not only provide an analysis of altitudes on departure and their changes, but to study whether or not the quote-unquote distant noise abatement departure would be more beneficial and have no, no significant noise impacts on the immediate airport adjacent area than the current close-in departure.
Yes, correct, and that was the recommendation of the Aviation Committee.
That's correct.
Yes.
And it has been brought to my attention by the city attorney that I will be recusing myself from item nine, citing a contractual obligation with my work.
Okay, and you pulled the minutes.
One, and then I'll record a no vote on item four.
Mr. Solich?
Let's see, item number three.
You're pulling or?
Pulling, item three.
Was that number three?
Yes. Mr. Pieter?
I want to pull number 16.
Mr. Duffield?
Pull number three.
Mr. Mayor Protem, none? And I have none. Okay, may we have a motion to move affirmative action of the consent calendar, except for those items removed or registered? No vote?
Yes. Yes, move the balance of consent calendar, which is added 1 through 17. Clarifications in item seven and the aforementioned language from Councilman Petros on item number 17, with the items number 16 and three polled, and a no vote from Councilman Curry on item number four.
And pulling number one.
Number one as well, thank you.
And recusal of number nine by Councilmember Petros.
All right, a second?
Second.
Sorry, and a continuation of eight, as long as that's the indefinite continuation of eight.
Okay, you got that continuation of eight.
Yes.
All right, shall we?
No public comment, right?
Public comment?
Comment on the consent calendar, the balance of the consent calendar.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. On the balance of the consent calendar, two items I wanted to comment on. One is item 14, which is the council approval of a nomination to the Corona del Mar Bid Board. The business improvement districts are government sanctioned bodies, which you are the overseeing body for, and I just wanted to point out, as the public is seeing it here, you have a single nominee who has been screened by the existing bid board, and I think that's rather a bad policy when you allow that to happen, because if the board itself winnows the candidates down to their favorite, anybody in that business improvement district who did not agree with the direction of the board is very unlikely ever to have a chance of being on the board and influencing what they do. Second comment I wanted to make is about item four, which is the second reading of a ordinance having to do with the city's towing franchise. And the comment I wanted to make that, on that, is to clarify whether this is actually the ordinance that was introduced by a motion and second at the last meeting. My understanding was the ordinance that was introduced was the red line one that had been distributed by the city staff, and they were trying to give future councils a flexibility in what the term of the towing contracts would be. The existing ordinance set a five-year ironclad limit on how long the city staff was proposing to make that at the discretion of the council. Councilman Pieter wanted the current contract that you approved at the last meeting to be limited to five hours, but I thought the ordinance being introduced was still the one with the flexibility. So I am really confused as to whether the ordinance before you tonight is what was introduced at the first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, do you want to clarify?
Yeah, just briefly, when Councilmember Pieter made the motion, he rejected the alternative ordinance that we had presented the council with as an option, and went with the original text, is my understanding, looking at, at the minutes as well as from my recollection of the meeting. And on the second issue, Mr. Moser had raised a question about consumer price index language that was used in the, in the ordinance, and that was a typographical error, so we fixed that language and referring to the correct, correct index. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
Madam Mayor? Good comment on, on the towing ordinance tonight. This is really only regarding the rates. It's not dealing with who we issued the contract to.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, so Mr. Curry is not, is voting no because he doesn't agree with the rates, not because of who we let the contract to. Thanks.
Any other public comments? No? Let's bring it back to the council. Any other comments from the council? Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items three and four. Yeah. Item three, ordinance number 2016-1, blessing, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending section 14.24.65. Oh, I'm sorry, that item is being pulled for discussion. Item four, ordinance number 2016-2, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Newport Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 5.15, relating to official tow services. Councilmember Duffield? Get your vote. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, now we will go to the items that were pulled, beginning with item number one, Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As many people know, our friend Jim Moser usually provides detailed comments on the minutes and, and on what we do up here, and while I don't always agree with Jim, I always find his comments to be thoughtful and occasionally compelling, and I think today he has provided some very thoughtful and compelling comments about the minutes as it relates to our adoption of the so-called fee rebate that some, but not all of the residents of our city are going to receive, which was offered at the last meeting by the mayor, apparently as a counterbalance to the increase in sewer fees, even though those are paid differently. Mr. Moser observes in the, in his comments on the minutes that it was not properly noticed, and indeed, that is correct. No one on the City Council, to my knowledge, other than the mayor, had actually seen this in writing. It was not on the agenda, so no member of the community knew it was going to come before the council, indeed, on the Saturday before the meeting. The mayor had specifically suggested that we needed to have a policy for how we use our reserves, to use part of it for long-term things like our pension liabilities and half of it for one-time capital expenditures. This flows, flies in the face of that very suggestion. This was never vetted by the Finance Committee, so despite the fact that we've just reappointed the members of the committee, they never had the opportunity to review and comment on the appropriateness of taking $1.8 million out of the city budget and turning it into a cash rebate for some but not all of our citizens. Mr. Moser further observes that it's difficult or impossible to execute this, given the nature of the law that we must follow, that it's inequitable and that not every citizen will get it, some will not, and that no public benefit was identified. Indeed, it was designed, I think, to help make some of the members of the council vote for the fee increase. They voted against it anyway.
Madam Mayor, are we rediscussing this item or are we discussing the minutes?
We're discussing the minutes because Mr. Moser suggests, because they're in the minutes, and Mr. Moser suggests this item should be reconsidered. Now, I can't make that motion because I voted against it, but I believe he's made some very valid points, and this goes back to when we adopted Mr. Pieter's firing strategy.
I'm still at a loss. Are we talking about the minutes or are we talking about the issue?
Mr. Pieter, I have the floor.
Point of order, Madam Mayor?
And, and the...
Still needs to discuss the point that we're agendized.
The point is, is that we illegally adopted an item at the last council meeting, similar to how we adopted your firing strategy.
So does that mean you're going to vote no on the minutes?
Are we voting on the minutes?
I'm suggesting that the minutes need to be, that Mr. Moser's recommendation, commenting on the minutes, that the item needs to be reconsidered, needs to be taken very seriously at that point in time. I can't make that motion.
Is that a motion to vote no on the minutes? Because that's what we're talking about, is the minutes.
Mr. Pieter, I have the floor.
A point of order, Madam Mayor? We're supposed to discuss the item that's agendized.
Mr. Pieter is correct. We are voting on, you pulled the minutes, to vote on the minutes.
Yes, the minutes suggest the council took an action it was not legally entitled to do.
So is that a motion to vote no on the minutes?
Let's dispense with this item. Are we?
Comment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harp, do you want to comment on those comments? Just to be clear for the record.
Well, I think we're going to discuss the sewer rates issue here in just a moment, since that item was pulled, but, you know, the, the item before you is voting on the minutes. I'm not sure if you're suggesting that additional language be added to the minutes. If so, maybe you could state that language, and then there can be a vote on whether the language should be included.
No, I think the action that we took was... No, I think the action that we took was inappropriate, and that we ought to rescind the action.
But you're really not talking about the minutes.
This is how we're able to get able to talk about it, because it's in the minutes, reflecting the action that we took, much the way we did it with the flying illnesses.
Still a point of order, he's still not talking about the minutes.
How we put stuff in the minutes last time.
He wants to rediscuss, discuss the issue.
So, I think it'd be appropriate this time to take a vote on the minutes.
I would move approval of the minutes.
Do you have a comment on the, let's go to public, do we have a second?
I have a second.
And let's go to public comment on the minutes. Just on the content of the minutes. Any comments? No, we'll bring it back. Let's take a vote, and the vote is, if you could restate the vote?
The vote is to approve the minutes. With Councilmember Curry voting no, the motion carries six-one.
All right, next item is number three, Mr. Selig.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled item number three because I've received a number of emails and inquiries from the public on this item, and I think there's probably some people that want to speak this evening, so that's my reason for pulling.
All right, why don't we turn it over to public comment?
My name is Nancy Skinner, I appreciate your pulling it, Mr. Selig. As you all know, because you received my email, that I wanted to, first of all, thank you for voting to increase the sewer fees, something that is very dear and important in the city, dear to my heart. Jack and I have been involved in water quality issues for over thirty years, and focusing on our bay, it's important for health, it's important for our business district, and it's just because everybody wants to have a clean bay and not have sewage into it. So sewer fees are extremely important, and I appreciate the fact that you recognize that and supported the increase in fees that are needed, but I'm not happy, in fact, what you did was the right thing to do, and I appreciate that. What you did do, though, is that you started a bad precedent by taking the money from our general fund and putting it into the sewer fee reimbursement to people who you think might need it. I have some doubt whether we have very many residents that really would need it, and if there is a number of people who do need it, there must be a better way to help them, but I would say most of us really don't notice it. Sewer fees are about the least, far and away, I think, the least costly utility that we all pay. Look at your gas bill, your electric bill, your telephone bill, and compare that to your sewer fees. This is a very small amount of money. It's the precedent I don't like, though. We have enterprise funds, as you know, for sewage, and I think we also have enterprise funds for water, and those are intended to be self-sustaining, and so doing the right thing by voting to increase our sewer fees was the right thing. Doing the gift, I guess I'll call it, I'm trying to think of the right word, the gift to residents for paying for those increases strikes me as not a wise thing to do with our money. We've just heard a moment ago that we have to find some money for a new police department, a jail probably, and I also know we have a huge unknown amount coming up for how we're going to protect Balboa Island, whether it's raising the seawall, and there are other things that I hear about a lot, and because I went to the goal-setting meeting on that Saturday, that we have quite a bit of unfunded pension funds. So to take money and subsidize people who probably don't need it, and as I say, if a few do, let me know, I'll, maybe I can help them myself, but to take money out of our general fund that has a lot of other needs, let's keep them separate. I strongly urge you to do this. Do the right thing, which you did do, increasing the sewer fees, but not do the wrong thing by subsidizing something that people can handle, and we should keep the tradition, not just from our city, but all the other cities too, that we do sewer fees separate from the general fund. So that's my urging to you, that you might want to re-vote that, rethink it, and do it the right way. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. The item before you is an ordinance, which if passed, would validate, not the rebate issue, but would validate setting sewer rates for the people who are Newport Beach sewer customers for the next five years by means of a resolution adopting this table. As I tried to say at your last meeting, I think it would be much better, as we do with water rates, to put this table in the ordinance, so it is in the Newport Beach Municipal Code, where for the next five years, everybody knows what has been approved. Putting it in a resolution, as I did not mention at the last meeting, I believe deprives the residents of Newport Beach who might object to the rate increase of being able to stage a referendum against it. If you update this every five years, they at least have that chance, and depriving them of the chance, even theoretically, I think is something you don't want to do. Other question, which I would be questioning if I were a sewer rate payer, which I am not, is whether this is a proper rate table. Among the information I think you were lacking when you approved this resolution, which would become effective if you pass the ordinance, is that in 2010, you heard that there was a proposal to increase the rates. What you did not know is the consultant at that time said that just a sixteen percent increase in the rate would be sufficient to keep the sewer system solvent in perpetuity. Five years later, you might be questioning why we need a hundred percent increase for all future years to maintain the same degree of solvency. I do not know what the answer is, there probably is one. I think you need to hear that before you make this the valid table. Second, there is a shifting, as you heard at the last meeting, and I didn't have time to comment on that, of what are called fixed charges from the larger water users to the smaller ones in this proposed rate structure. The smaller water users are the residential customers whose water does not all go into the sewer system, and that past system of sewer charges was to try to equalize that and give the people whose water does go in, the big users, a bigger chunk of the payment. And so I think the burden of that is being improperly shifted to the small residents. And finally, I learned just yesterday that even though I, like Ms. Skinner, am strongly opposed to using the general fund as a gift, it appears that the city has not been using the general fund to pay for its own use of the sewer system. And if it is many years in arrears in paying its own amount, it may be owing something, not to the rate payers, but to the fund, to bring it up to equity for what it should be paying, and in the future, be making payments into the fund, which might affect this rate structure also. So I think those are all questions that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments? Thank you. Let's bring it back. Any other comments up here?
I'll move the action.
A second?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, excuse me. Yes.
I wanted to ask staff, do we pay for our own sewer use?
No, no city, that, city facilities don't pay for sewer.
Remember when we say "city," we're talking about restrooms at the beach?
That are public.
That are public. We're talking about libraries, that libraries have restrooms, community centers have restrooms. Yes, this building, there are city employees who use the restrooms, but generally, we're talking about use that occurs across the community by visitors and residents.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Selig, did you ask me?
No, I made the motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem Muldoon?
Just, because I enjoy this kind of conversation, I always wanted to tell Mr. Warren Buffett that he's welcome to write a bigger check if he thinks everyone should pay taxes. I think it's actually a tax write-off. I know it's for the state of Newport Beach, if you want to write a larger tax, or write a check, larger check to the city than your fees or taxes, you may, and I'm sure staff would welcome it, but I just don't believe it's a gift when you're returning someone's money. It's not a gift, it's a return, it's a refund, which is why I supported the refund. At the same time, without talking out of both sides of my mouth, I'm actually against the rate increase, because I've received hundreds of emails from residents who have asked that we not raise rates, but instead we apply the surplus to infrastructure costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let's call the vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2016-1, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending section fourteen point twenty-four point zero-six-five, Title fourteen of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to sewer use charge, with councilmembers Muldoon, Duffield, Piattar, and Selig voting no, the motion fails.
Okay, so the motion to approve the sewer rate increase failed. Okay. All right, item number sixteen, Mr. Piattar, you pulled that item.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is regarding the fire pits and allowing some budget to actually do the work for the project that was approved by the Coastal Commission, and I don't know if, Dave, if it's appropriate to ask the council if they would write a letter to the AQMD asking whether or not they would rescind, consider rescinding 444? Can we do that under this item as agendized?
That may be a question Aaron might want to weigh in on. So, Mr. Piattar, the intent of this item would be to comply with the plan that was, at least, we don't have a permit yet, but tentatively approved by the Coastal Commission. If you do not want to take this course, and we, you know, arguably, we could hold off on this expenditure, if you thought that the council should take a position to the AQMD Board for, sorry, that would change Rule 444, probably be best, imagine you could make that motion to bring that back, I don't know that you could actually bring it back at the, arguably, you could vote to bring it back next time, right?
It would be an item you'd want to consider at a future meeting, it wouldn't be something you could act on tonight.
Okay, I just know Coastal's got a meeting coming up here that if, and all I'm doing is, if we were to submit a letter to the AQMD, I think the votes are there that we could likely get a rescinding of Rule 444, which regulated the beach fire pits, and then we would have an option as a city. We can either go ahead with the permit as we've got it permitted with Coastal, or we can put them back the way they were before any of this ever happened, and we have the option.
Isn't that a separate, excuse me, isn't that a separate issue?
Well, we're talking, we're talking about spending the money on this, and I'm just thinking if there's a possibility that we might not have to spend the money, that I wouldn't mind having that option.
Well, Mr. Kiff, I think, I believe just said that he could hold off spending the money, but the Rule 444 matter is a separate issue that we would have to make a position on as a council, correct?
Well, yeah, arguably, you could continue this item, you could set for a future agenda a letter regarding Rule 444. I don't know, Dave, if you want to comment the life of the bid from this point forward, but we could just rebid, too.
We could rebid, or we could hold off it. This is just, again, allocating the money to go ahead and do the construction, so you could do parallel pass if you want, you could keep us going on getting our permits and bids and not ward it yet until you get your letter off, or hold off the whole item.
All right, so as point of order, we've already discussed the item of agendizing, so maybe this has to come up.
How about, how about if I make a motion that we can, we continue this item indefinitely, and at the same time, direct staff to come back with a proposal to send a letter to the AQMD in support of rescinding the rule.
Do we have a second? That is, okay, we have some public comment on this amended item. No public comment, bring it back. Any comments up here? Mr. Curry.
Well, just to note that this is a $60,000 expenditure mandated by Mr. Piattar's plan, which there were ultimately seventeen plans, and he used the Americans with Disabilities Act as a means to get his firing plan adopted, much to the opposition of residents in many parts of the community who were affected by it. I think this requires us now to put sidewalks and other access on the beach that wasn't there before, but I think you just heard him say that he'd like to go back and revisit the entire plan, start all over again, and go back to where it was, and not have any kind of reduction in the impact of fire rings on the homes of people who live in Corona del Mar or in Balboa, which simply prolongs this issue in the community. The plan that we have, which involves the ADA accessible fire rings, has been approved, which, first of all, by the way, it's not dissimilar from the plan that was adopted by the City Council in 2013, basically the same, but it's been approved by the Coastal Commission, and so if we want to move forward with Coastal Commission, this is what they have approved, and this is what we should do in good faith. So this effort now to sort of change the entire issue, you know, we have, we have agendas for a purpose, so that the public gets notice about these issues when they come to these meetings, and here, yet again, any issue can be sort of a hook for putting something on the agenda that was not publicly noticed, that was not been properly vetted by staff, that is not any kind of fiscal analysis, and yet here we are again. So we've approved this plan for the fire rings, it costs money to do it, so let's, let's spend the money, let's comply with our application to the Coastal Commission on this, and let's move this issue along.
And just briefly, we can't have a discussion of the Rule 444, and that would be something that I have to come back, so.
But that's part of the motion, is that that would come back, so we're not talking about anything that hasn't been agendized. We're asking for something to come back so that we can talk about it.
I'm just worried that this might delve into more of a discussion about, about that issue.
All right, so the matter that we are going to be voting on is item number sixteen, access for the budget amendment for the contract for the fire rings. So we have an alternate motion?
No.
No.
I'll make a, I'll make a substitute motion that we approve the item.
Second?
Okay, let's vote.
Mayor Protem Muldoon and councilmembers Duffield and Piattar voting no, the motion carries four-three.
Okay, we dealt with the consent calendar. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Madam Mayor, Council, my name is Brad Humphries, I'm a longtime resident in the city of Newport Beach. My wife and I have raised four kids here locally, and two are in college and two are still in our hair, and I'm also the president of the CDM High School Girls Volleyball Foundation, and I invite all of you to come out and see a game, match this fall. I'm the owner and operator of MetroPro Towing, one of the bidders, the top scorers in the selection process that took place last week, and am humbled and honored to have been a top scorer as named by the police department. We, it means everything to us, it's what we do, it's what we work, it's 24/7 business. We, it's hard, it's hard work, it's hard to do well, it's hard to do well consistently, and we're just real pleased. We don't take, we have zero sense of entitlement in what we do every single day, and it wasn't an accident, we do the same, thankful to do the same service in the city of Irvine and Costa Mesa, San Ana, and also Tustin, and our logistics here and our delivery of service is probably outdoes anywhere else, just with our dynamics of being able to come in from Irvine with those resources, Costa Mesa with our resources there. We initiated our relationship with the Auto Club of Southern California to try to get a little bit of a landing pad over here in the CDM area to kind of launch into Newport Coast and down through the flower streets, and that was real key, key part of improving our service. Our empathy towards the customers that come in is a big part of what we do, we're real proud of that, and it's woven in the fabric of our personality and our company, and I know the police department has a lot of respect for that and has scored appropriately. There was some talk about our facilities, humbly, we own 185,000 square feet that is, was fully permitted, conditionally used permitted, and, you know, qualified underneath the bidding Twenty-two thousand square feet as well for evidence storage, which we have a big need for here in the city. I do want you to know that, I don't think that was accounted for in your discussions. We have, you know, the staff did a great job of pointing that out, we have a number of unfortunate tragedies that stay in our possession for years at no cost, and it's far more than the thousand square footage of a minimum that's required by our municipal code. by our municipal code. That was scored very well and noted in the staff report, I thought. The west side of Costa Mesa, we're proud to say, I'm glad we own our property over there. There's a lot of economics going on there. The highest and best use of property over there is certainly not a tow yard or boat yard. And, you know, having control of that and being a stakeholder in that land and in this contract was a big advantage, I think, for the city, frankly. But may I have three seconds?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, ma'am. So, what happened? We took a, the top scorer, and we leapfrogged that top scorer with another contractor that was non-qualified, non-compliant, non-responsive in this process. I'm not sure, you know, we, the code of what we do is Section 5.15. It's been in existence for decades. Those requirements haven't changed.
Could you please wrap up your comments, please?
I'm just wondering where the transparency is when that's something like that happens. You know, are we not undermining the public's trust when we make decisions and completely bypass the rating system that the public demands? So, I'm going to ask humbly, that an eligible member of the council up there make a motion to reconsider tonight. I just think that's the right thing to do, and I'm hopeful that that will occur. Thank you, ma'am.
Right, thank you very much. Any other comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I was going to use this opportunity to urge a reconsideration of the vote on the sewer rebate issue, but since the ordinance failed, I believe that is no longer effective, and you're apparently going to rethink the entire sewer fee matter, which I think is a good thing. And I don't want to stir the pot, but if the council was looking for some kind of irregularity in the city's fee schedule, I would suggest you consider how residential trash collection is paid for in the city of Newport Beach. In that case, I happen to be a beneficiary of that, so you might think it's odd I would be commenting on it. But as you may or may not know, trash collection is a service provided by the city. The residents of Newport Coast and the residents of Santa Ana Heights have to pay in full for that service. I receive an equivalent or better service and pay nothing extra at all for that. So, I believe those other residents are subsidizing me through the general fund to some extent. I'm not sure I can quantify how much, but I think that's a bigger issue than the sewer one. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, let's bring it back to the council for any oral reports. Mr. Pedron, Mr. Curry?
The Finance Committee will meet Thursday at 4:00.
Mr. Selich?
I have none.
Mr. Piattar?
None.
Mr. Duffield? Mayor Protem Muldoon? And I have none. All right, let's open to public hearing. Appeal of the Planning Commission approval of Balboa Marina West Restaurant. Staff, would you like to make a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dixon and members of the council. Patrick Alfaro, Planning Program Manager with the Community Development Department. As stated, this is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a condition use permit and site development review. The project site is located at 201 East Coast Highway, basically southwest of Bayside Drive and East Coast Highway. The condition use permit and site development review would allow a new 14,252-square-foot restaurant, which would include outdoor dining, live entertainment, full alcoholic beverage service, and late hours, and also a new Marina restroom building. This is the vicinity map, just to orient you. Linda Isle is located to the south. Across the channel is the Bay Shores Residential Community. Lower Castways on the other side of the bridge, the Back Bay Landing Site, Bayside Village, Mulholland Park, and the commercial properties at, have the Chevron Station, the Pacific Bayside Plaza Shopping Center, and Newport Auto Center. Some of the adjacent land uses in the area, you see the project site where the restaurant would be located in red. Soul Restaurant is located here, and 333.
Patrick, I'm going to interrupt. We're having some technical difficulties, that's why it keeps flashing. So, if anyone is irritated by that like us, it's something to do with the camera, and we apologize. Sorry.
All right. The existing restaurants are located here, Soul and 333. This is the site plan. The restaurant building itself is there, highlighted in blue. The outdoor patio dining area is depicted outlined in red. The restroom building is located here. And the parking layout we have here, Area A is a valet parking area. Area B is self-parking but used as valet during peak times. Area C is a shared parking area with Soul Restaurant, and Area D is self-parking. There's also an off-site parking component. 16 spaces would be utilized by employees at the Bayside Shopping Center, about a mile away from the project site. You can see the location on the inset. Some of the key issues that were discussed at the Planning Commission deal with the outdoor patio deck. You see it there, highlighted with the arrows. One thing I would like to point out, that under one of the conditions of approval, the dining area is restricted to the area where the upper arrow is, and the other area, the lower arrow, is, patrons are basically prohibited from using that area. The deck does have to remain open, though, to provide proper emergency access. The other issue is dealing with the sliding glass wall system. However, the Planning Commission conditioned the project to remove the sliding glass wall system on the south elevation, so right now, as conditioned, the project would only have the sliding glass wall system on the western elevations facing the channel. Another issue dealt with the service entrance and loading area depicted here, and this area is conditioned to basically cease activity after 10:00 in the evening. The coastal study was done as part of the project. The study projected noise levels for various scenarios with live entertainment, with recorded music, and with the windows opened and closed. The conclusion of the study was there was a potential impact for the nighttime after 10:00 PM noise standard to be exceeded if recorded music is used and the windows are open, and this would affect the second floor of some residences on Linda Isle. To mitigate that impact, a number of noise control conditions were imposed, primarily the key one is to close doors and windows when either live entertainment or recorded music occurs, and at 10:00 PM. As I mentioned earlier, to limit patrons to the dining area of the patio. As I also mentioned, that the fixed windows be done on the south elevation, that the loading area closed at 10:00 PM, that access to the Marina Restaurants be limited by card key to only to Marina tenants. The posted a courtesy sign, basically advising patrons and employees to be courteous to surrounding uses. Additional design specifications that are detailed in the acoustical study for the design of the building to ensure that the assumptions of the acoustical analysis are carried over into the construction phase. And then finally, a final designed acoustical review at the building permit phase. As for the appeal, there were four major points. One is that the city violates SEQA policy against deferred analysis and mitigation, that the approval fails to, the project analysis failed to adequately analyze and mitigate noise impacts to Linda Isle, that the analysis failed to adequately analyze and mitigate potential light and glare impacts to Linda Isle, and then finally, that a new comprehensive environmental analysis is necessary. Regarding the first point, we'd like to point out that SEQA requires that environmental impacts be done as early in the process as possible. Therefore, when we had a complete project with the waterside and, but not a fully visualized design for the landside, we went ahead and did an environmental analysis in the form of mitigated negative declaration. And so, if anything, we think that the, we are meeting the spirit of SEQA, that we did environmental analysis and identify impacts as early as possible. Also, the project that was approved is actually smaller than the design concept that was studied in the mitigated declaration. We have less floor area, so we could see corresponding less impacts with parking and traffic generation, thus earthwork, so we're dealing with less grading, less associated dust, noise, and other construction impacts. And the height is lower than originally depicted in the concept plan, so there are less visual impacts. The mitigated negative declaration did recognize the potential for noise impacts, mainly because the outdoor patio design and the operational characters restaurant were not known at that time. And so, a mitigation measure was included, MMN-1, which required further acoustical analysis, which was completed with part of this project, and the project was modified and conditioned accordingly. So, we believe that this does meet the requirements of SEQA. Yes?
Let me interrupt. The mitigation measure, MMN-1, not only required further acoustical analysis, but it also set performance measurements to weigh that analysis against. Isn't that not correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Dealing with the actual noise impacts, one of the points made was that noise measurements were not taken at Linda Isle. They were actually taken from the water just adjacent. However, these measurements were only used to establish existing ambient noise levels to identify compliance with our noise standards. The data is then incorporated into the noise model and used to estimate noise levels for Linda Isle, so Linda Isle was addressed in this analysis. Another issue was that mechanical noise was not addressed. Well, mechanical equipment typically is not analyzed at the SEQA level because design specifics are not known at that time. More importantly, though, all mechanical equipment is regulated by the municipal code and has to abide by the city's noise ordinance. A stationary noise source such as mechanical is probably one of the most easiest to monitor and mitigate, and because it changes over time, it has to be regulated in this fashion. It was also mentioned about the doors and the Planning Commission basically removing a condition that the windows be closed. Again, this only deals with the one identified potential impact, and that is addressed by saying whenever live or recorded music occurs, the windows have to be closed, and there's an automatic shut-off at 10:00 PM. And then finally, noise identified the loading dock that is handled by the basic curfew of activity in the loading dock and service area after 10:00 PM. Regarding lighting glare impacts in the aisle, one of the issues was, it was concerned about a raised pad elevation that was studied in the concept design and the original MND would cause headlights to shine into the residences. Well, the new design doesn't have the tuck-under parking design, so the pad is not going to be raised up to the 9 feet that was originally evaluated. So, that is not an issue here. Also, the design includes a three-foot-high landscape screen intended to block any potential lights from the parking lot. And then finally, all outdoor lighting is again regulated by the municipal code, and the Community Development Director has the authority to require dimming of lights if it's found to create excessive glare or light pollution on adjacent properties. And finally, whether a new SEQA analysis is needed? Well, again, the, found that the new design did not identify any new significant environmental effects. There were no increases to previously identified environmental effects, and no mitigation measures are required. So, essentially, the MND analysis stands within the information that we have, has been incorporated in the projects through design and conditions. So, we feel that all the mitigation measures from the MND are incorporated into this project. That concludes my presentation. I've answered. Any questions?
Council, any questions before we put it to the public? Any questions?
Just one quick one. I understand that the plan was sort of smaller than it could have been, or wasn't exactly everything that could have been submitted? Could you detail that?
Yes. When the mitigated negative direction was analyzed, they included, I think it was a maximum development scenario. And as I indicated earlier, it had much more square foot, square footage proposed. It also had a greater height, and design had tuck-under parking and raised elevation. So, the project is smaller in floor area, it is smaller in height, and it has less grading, increased in the height of the pad.
Sorry, I didn't quite articulate myself. Well, that is what I was getting at, but what I meant specifically is, could you explain to a layperson what that means as far as legally or rights? That still may be confusing as well.
Just briefly, the full SEQA analysis was done, and it was basically a larger envelope than what was actually approved. So, the analysis has been completely done for purposes of SEQA, and what was approved was inside that envelope of what was initially considered, if that's what you're looking for.
I might also add, it is below the maximum floor area that's allowed into the zoning.
Any other comments from the council? One moment, please. All right. Procedurally, why don't we bring forth the appellant to make their statement, please?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Dan Miller, representing the.
You're not. The appellant.
I'm so used to being the applicant.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paige Gosney. I'm an attorney representing Linda Isle Homeowners Association in connection with this appeal. I want to express our appreciation for the council's consideration of the appeal. I trust that the council has taken the time to review our appeal letter carefully in order to better understand the association's concerns about the project. For the sake of brevity, and of course, the three-minute time limitation, I won't reiterate what's already been outlined probably more eloquently in our appeal letter. Instead, I want to focus my comments tonight more directly on the Planning Commission's decision to do away with one of the mitigation measures that the city's noise expert said was needed to mitigate the project's noise impacts. Now, the city first published a mitigated negative declaration, an MND, evaluating, as it's been referred to tonight, an envelope of potential impacts for what was at the time a purely conceptual hypothetical project. Now, the MND's noise analysis concluded that noise impacts from the proposed outdoor patio would exceed the city's noise control ordinance, that these impacts would be significant, and that as a result, mitigation measures would be required. Now, as mitigation for these impacts, the city adopted, or as the MND, excuse me, included mitigation measure MMN-1, which was referred to earlier, that required an acoustical study to be prepared at some point in the future to verify that the project, as it was ultimately proposed, would be able to comply with the city's noise ordinance, and would do so subject to the implementation of certain noise and design requirements that would help mitigate any impacts associated with the proposed restaurant. Now, putting aside the question of whether or not the city's SEQA review process, the envelope process provided the necessary environmental review, and whether a subsequent noise study constitutes acceptable mitigation under SEQA, both of which are discussed in our appeal letter, the city commissioned the WILINFM to prepare an acoustical study to satisfy this report. Now, even though the acoustical study did not include noise measurements from Linda Isle and did not evaluate the impacts of mechanical equipment noise from the restaurant building, operational noise or noise impacts from parking area B, the study determined that certain noise control measurements, or measures, excuse me, would need to be implemented for the project to comply with the city's noise standards. Now, among other things, these measures required, and these are measures that were recommended by the city's own noise expert, that the glass wall, the retractable wall in the dining area on the southwest corner of the proposed restaurant building be replaced with fixed windows. windows, or at a minimum, that a lock be placed on the retractable wall, presumption being that they didn't want patrons opening and closing the wall and allowing noise to escape and affect Lynda Isle residences. Now, the planning commission at the hearing on December 17th rejected the requirement for fixed windows in this area, as well as the lock requirement, because it wanted to grant the restaurant operator, whoever that might ultimately be, more freedom to open and close the walls. If the city is going to utilize the MND to satisfy CEQA and to use an acoustical study as mitigation for noise impacts, then the city has an obligation under CEQA and a responsibility to the public, particularly residents of Lynda Isle, many of which were here tonight, and who will be most directly affected by noise from the project, to adopt and implement those measures that its own expert has determined are necessary to mitigate the noise impacts from the proposed project. The city should not allow the planning commission to simply do away with mitigation measures that its own expert has determined are necessary. At a minimum, we request that the city council correct the planning commission's error by reinstating the original controls. The failure to do so will expose the city to having its project overturned under CEQA. Now, for this reason, as well as the reasons discussed in our appeal letter, we would urge the city council to vacate the planning commission's resolution approving the project, and direct staff to conduct a new environmental review of the potential impacts of the project. At a minimum, we would urge the city council to reinstate the full mitigation measures recommended by the city's noise expert. I'm available to answer any questions the council might have. There are several residents from Lynda Isle who are here tonight who will speak to the operational impacts, noise, hours, and other things that will be most directly affecting them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, Mr. Selich.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
The application says, or the staff report says the application is from the Lynda Isle Homeowners Association?
That's correct.
So, the board of directors approved filing the application?
That's correct.
Do they do that by like resolution or minute action, or how do they do that?
Well, I'm not sure how they approved it. We were given direction that the board had approved us to file the appeal, and we did so.
Did a board member sign the application, or someone else did?
We signed the application on behalf of the board.
Okay, so you're saying the board approved it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pieter.
Madam Mayor, before you sit down, Patrick, didn't you say that the window facing the south was deleted by conditions on the planning commission?
The recommendation from the acoustical analysis referred to the southwest corner here, and there's two sliding glass walls, one here, one here. The planning commission conditioned that, per the recommendation, this be replaced with a fixed window. However, this one could remain a sliding glass wall by the planning commission's action, and it did not include the recommendation that it'd be, have a lock.
Right.
So--
So, the wall that you're talking about, is it the south-facing or west-facing?
It's at the southwest corner, as Mr. Alford indicated there.
There's two sides, one's facing west, one's facing south. The planning commission deleted the south one.
They deleted the, where the bottom arrow shown on the--
That would be the south one.
That's correct.
Is that adequate for you? Or do you want the west one closed also?
We want all of them closed.
Okay.
We want full mitigation for all noise impacts from this restaurant.
Okay, and Patrick, the mitigation measures from the acoustical engineer, did he specifically say, "We can't have any windows facing west"?
No. The, it was only dealing with the southwest, and the other ones along this elevation and along this elevation were deemed not to be a problem.
And is the acoustic engineer okay with deleting the south one but not the west one?
The acoustical consultant was not present at the hearing, so was not able to comment on that.
Okay, so has he since reviewed it, and is he okay? Does he feel that it mitigates his impact?
No.
He has not reviewed it?
Has not reviewed it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other counsel comments? Applicant, please.
Dan Miller, representing the Irvine Company, mayor and council members. When this was before you, back about a year ago, on the environmental documentation and that approval, we spent the next year working with the residents and the staff, and so many of those mitigation measures that were just presented to you are a result of that. As indicated, the building's smaller, the height has gone down, a lot of those things were addressed. Subsequently, after the planning commission acted on this item in December, we had a meeting with members of the board, and then we also met with the residents immediately adjacent. Cut the chase, it's okay if you want to reinstate the southwest closure. That was the planning commission. We didn't request that, so we would agree to close that back up. That's fine. The other thing that was asked by the residents across the way was, right now, under code, the whole south side is double glazed glass, which kind of always attenuates the area. They asked if we could make that triple glazed, and we'll do that. That will further reduce the noise. The other request that the residents had was about the sea walls, concerned about when you're putting piles in, in terms of the slips and the public docks, the impact it may have on the sea walls because they're old. When we did this first phase of the Marina back in '08, we monitored that at that time, and we had a lot more piles. The technology is much better today, and there were no impacts. However, we'll agree to do a pre and post-construction inspection of those sea walls to ensure that when those piles do go in, there won't be any impacts. What we're trying to do here is get the site development review approved. We can then amend our coastal commission application, which right now has the public slips and the additional of the private slips. We'll amend it to put this land, the land site into that application, and we can move forward with the overall project. I'm here to answer any other questions and would appreciate an opportunity after you take public comments to summarize. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the counsel? Mr. Petrus.
I believe that the mitigation was for, on the south and west-facing, to provide a lock system for the retractable wall. Since the planning commission action, the south-facing wall has now been changed to a enclosed wall, and I thought you just said--
We'll go back to the original plan--
The staff recommendation-- Not to close it, but to have a retractable wall with a lock system on it.
Yes, the original staff recommendation to the planning commission, we'll go back to that language.
Or the west-facing wall.
Southwest, that one corner down there.
Or the west-facing.
Not the other west above, as Patrick outlined.
And the south will still be--
The south was always going to be fixed. That was always the, from our standpoint, would be, be fixed. So, as was just in that, right there--
That will be closed.
That will be closed.
And that will be retractable but with a lock on it.
Yes.
Okay.
Original, is that correct, Patrick? The original staff recommendation?
The acoustic hole consultant recommend one or the other, either be fixed or--
Right, so fixed on the south and retractable with the lock on the west.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr.--
Is the triple glazing just on the south wall?
Just on the south wall. That was their request, because that's the immediate greatest impact. It's where the potential banquet area would be, and the concern that there may be no more noise. So, they requested that and will comply with that.
Mr. Pieter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you're willing to do all of these, changing these conditions? Have you already worked with staff as far as modifying conditions of approval for these issues?
Yes, all of those, there's 93 conditions of approval, and other than the two I just, we just talked about, the triple glaze and the pre and post-construction, and going back to the original staff recommendation on the wall system--
Yeah, but we're not following the existing. We're talking about fixed triple glaze on the south side--
Yes, other than--
And locked retractable on the south--
Right.
West glazing.
Right.
So, if staff can maybe work on some amended conditions that we might be able to adopt, that'd be great.
Yeah.
While we listen to public comments.
With those two and going back to the original planning, I mean, staff recommendation, planning commission, we can abide by that.
All right. Without further counsel questions, let's go to the public, please. Please come forward. Any public, members of the public wish to speak? And if there, how many of you would like to speak? If you would, come on down. Make it easier that way. And stand at both mics, that's a good idea.
I live directly across from the project. My name is Margot O'Connor, and I have many concerns about this project, mainly due to the size of this building and the hours of operation. Even at 14,252 square feet, I feel funny saying, using the word "even," this is going to be the largest restaurant slash nightclub in Newport Beach, and it's going to have live entertainment and serve alcohol until 2:00 in the morning. It's yards away from an established residential community. The acoustical study said that it would probably impact the second floor of the residences of Lynda Isle. That's where our master bedrooms are. And homeowners should have a reasonable expectation of going to bed at night and sleeping through the night, not having to wait till 2:00 in the morning. This closing, actually, in the staff report, the last sentence is, "The staff recommends that the sliding glass walls be replaced with fixed windows." Period. Replacing it on this side, and Councilman Pieter, that side, not very comfortable with locks on that side. This can lead, could lead to problems, and you know, some of the residents, we're right across, but there are others that are diagonally right across, so the sound is going to travel there and disturb them. It really needs to be, it's so large, and with all this noise from amplified and live entertainment, it really needs to be a fully enclosed, permanently enclosed building. We're so close. And the Irvine Company says that this will be a fine dining establishment. Fine dining does not take place from 10:00 p.m. till 2:00 in the morning. Those hours describe a nightclub. And there'll be noise outside of the building also. Irvine Company only allows, and even so, it's below what's required, but they only allow for parking for Seoul, the new building, and the enlarged Marina. We all know that 333 uses that parking lot. So, the true parking deficiency is much greater than what they're stating. And we're, we and Lynda Isle will have the problem with the glare of the headlights, the noise from inebriated people leaving, talking, going to their cars, and the mitigation are signs that go, "Shh." Basically, that's all I saw there. And it's going to be very disturbing, in particular, what's going on in the parking lot, and it will be very full. So, where will all these other cars that need to park go? There's no parking on Coast Highway, first part of Bayside Drive. They'll have to go to the nearby communities of Promontory Bay, Harbor Drive, perhaps over. And Councilman Selich, that, those are your, that's your district, and I have spoken to some of the people in Promontory Bay Drive and Harbor Island Drive. They have no idea of how large this project is and how the lack of parking will affect them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Bill O'Connor. I live on Lynda. I, we've had some productive meeting, I think, with the Irvine Company in the past several weeks, and I think that if the council would just delay this a little bit, we could have further productive meetings with them. The primary problem, of course, is the 2:00 a.m. closing. It's an issue that I don't see how you'd get around. My wife mentioned, and I'm not going to go over it again, but the, we've been at the planning commission and listened to the explanation of the parking, and it's incomprehensible. And it requires a variance by you to pass this. It's, your own staff report says that the parking, they're 60 short, and they don't know how they're going to fix it. The other thing that I will point out is that it's very nice residential areas around this project, and in your own staff's report, it mentions that we're in reporting area 41, which in terms of alcohol, the ratio for Orange County is one to 700, one alcohol license for off-sale, for on-sale to 737 residents. Our area, and we're within 50 yards of it, will have one for every 274 residents. So, we'll kind of be the alcohol capital, certainly of Newport Beach, maybe of Orange County. It, if the, if we worked, if we were allowed to work more with the Irvine Company, if there was a halt to just clearing this, I think that we could come to an arrangement with them that would be good, and we wouldn't be required to go to the coastal commission, fight this thing any further. We could probably work something out. We're not that far apart. There are just some things that would be very, very difficult to live with. There are no CEQA police, you know, I've researched this, and there's nobody to go to. You are the people that are the CEQA police. You're the ones that manage CEQA and determine whether or not this thing gets negotiated further or is just passed. So, I appeal to you, because the only thing that's left after that is very expensive and very obnoxious. It's the courts, and we don't want to do that. We want to be able to do this reasonably, and I make an appeal to you to just hold this up. Not, we're not trying to not have anything go forward here. We want it to go forward in a way that everybody's happy, and I think that can be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, thank you for hearing me. My name is Maureen Santo. I live in Bayside Village, within a few hundred yards of the proposed project. I am speaking in support of the Lynda Isle residents and of those silent residents who do not yet have a voice. What about the 49 homes that you recently approved for Back Bay Landing? Those people are going to be within 100 feet of this new development. I think we owe it to them to consider noise and light mitigation. We in Bayside Village can already hear noise from PCH and from Seoul. The new development will certainly increase our noise level. Something else that has not been mentioned is the traffic. Just this week, in the daily pilot, we saw the images of the two new hotels going in in the dunes. That was approved 10 years ago. It's finally going to happen. They've identified the hotels. Their only entrance is Bayside Drive. You have approved Back Bay Landing, restaurants, shops, residences. Their only entrance is Bayside Drive. We, 280 homes in Bayside Village, our only entrance is Bayside Drive. This is going to be a real public safety issue if something isn't done about the numbers of vehicles, the parking, the way you're going to control it. Mr. Selich, you and I both approached, you live on Bayside Drive, and I don't believe that any of us received notification of how this was going to impact our area. I think the council, the planning commission failed us, and I would like you to take a serious look at parking. We're already going to lose parking along Bayside Drive to the Back Bay Landing project. You're going to lose more to this project, and I would urge you to please listen to the residents of Lynda Isle, their appeal, and reconsider a number of issues on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As I understand, our municipal code, this hearing tonight is what's called a de novo hearing, meaning it's completely new consideration of the appropriateness of approving this application. What the planning commission decided has no bearing on it, and the issues that can be raised are not limited to what the lawyer for the appellant's may have raised. I would agree, from what I heard at the planning commission meeting with some, several of the previous speakers, that one of the key problems with this is the parking issue. There are two restaurants that exist there now, both of which-- There are two restaurants that exist there now, both of which have been grandfathered in to operate with parking that is under their control inadequate for their own use. It somehow functions at the moment because there is this big unused parking lot next to it. A large part of that unused parking lot will be covered over by the new largest restaurant in Newport Beach, and my understanding, as other speakers said, is the totality of the three restaurants, even though it looks like a very big parking lot, under our code is woefully insufficient to supply them. Although you don't have to be influenced by what the Planning Commission did, my recollection is they swept that issue under the rug on the basis of a verbal promise from Mr. Dan Miller of the Irvine Company, that the Irvine Company has a very good landlord and somehow would make it work. Now, one solution the Irvine Company might pursue would be, if all the restaurants are very successful, to build a multi-level parking garage there. I think by right, they can do that. Doesn't count towards their development limit. But parking garages are hideous. It would be especially hideous at that location, and I think a better solution would be to approve a more modest restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? No comments? Let's bring it back to the appellant, please. If you had, if you have any comments. If you don't have any comments? No?
I'll just be very brief. I appreciate Mr. Miller's proposal to implement some of the changes that we've been requesting and to address some Linda Isle's concerns. I think the goal, you know, obviously, tonight was to address Linda Isle residents' concerns about those noise impacts, to the extent that we can do that, to the extent that the council can take the initiative to correct errors that were made at the Planning Commission level and to mitigate all impacts, noise, certainly the noise, and otherwise to residents. We would appreciate that, and, and, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mil, oh, Mr. Pieter?
I have a question, if you don't mind. You didn't comment at all on hours of operation, yet a lot of the residents have. Is that because the board's not asked you to deal with that issue?
No. That issue was briefed in our appeal letter for purposes of tonight's hearing. I'm trusting that the council, yourself included, read those comments, understood them, appreciated them. Linda Isle residents, who are going to be those individuals most affected by the hours of operation and most affected by the noise from patrons in the parking lot and noise escaping from the restaurant, I felt are better suited to comment on those impacts, and they were briefed in our appeal.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, if you want to make responsive comments?
Thank you. First of all, this is not a nightclub. Dancing is prohibited. It is a restaurant. We want to be treated like any other restaurant in the city in terms of consistency with hours. But remember, there's another step in the process. Once an operator is determined, we have to go back through the city staff process, and they will analyze the hours of operation based on who the operator is, in terms of ABC, police, all that will be through another process. So, at this point, we would just like to be treated like any other restaurant in town, and I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Pieter?
Mr. Miller, some of the restaurants that we have do stop serving food on weeknights at 11:00, and yet you've got 2:00 every day, and you're serving alcohol all the way till 2:00. Well, half an hour before you shut down your alcohol service, but you're open till 2:00 every day.
Yes.
Do you have a problem if we get shut down Sunday night through Thursday night at midnight?
Again, until we have an operator, it restricts our working with that potential restaurant owner when we limit it at this point. If there's a concern based on the operator, that will be handled at the staff.
But the only reason that you'll come back is you'll deal with police on ABC. Will you have to get a CUP for the alcohol license?
And that can affect hours, and also through the operators. I'm not sure what the process is called, but.
So, Patrick, I'm interrupting you, but do they have to come back when they get their alcohol license, or will the CUP grant them their alcohol use?
They will have to obtain an operator's license.
But it's not a CUP?
No.
So, this CUP will grant them that?
Pardon me?
So, if we want to put conditions of operation on their alcohol sales, does it belong here or in their operations permit?
Well, perhaps the city attorney might want to elaborate, but the city authority on alcohol sales deals with land use, and the actual conditions on alcohol beverage sales is the purview of the ABC. So, there might be some limits on that. But the restaurant operation can be addressed through conditions on the operator's license.
Okay. You want to be treated like other restaurants. We've got a lot of other restaurants that are shut down at midnight, Sunday through Thursday, or Sunday through Wednesday.
I agree, but not in this area.
Okay. Do you know what the operating hours are for 333 in Seoul as far as restaurants?
I believe they have it until 2:00.
Patrick, do you know the closing time for 333 in Seoul? Are they both 2:00 AM, seven days a week?
I'll need a moment to look that up.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Selich, did you want to speak?
Close the hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Selich?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to make a motion, and then if I get a second to it, I'd like to speak to it. I'm going to move the staff recommendation, items B and C, that we find that the subsequent negative declaration to the mitigated negative declaration is not required, and that we adopt resolution 2016-28 with the additional provisions suggested by Mr. Miller, that we go back to the original Planning Commission, recommendation by staff to the Planning Commission on the southwest doors, that we have triple glazing on the south wall, and that there be a pre and post inspection of the C walls is a, is a condition.
I'll second that.
In evaluating what's been before us tonight, I just, I find that the information that was presented by our staff, first of all, let's talk about the SEQA issue, because that's what comes up on these things, is that they have demonstrated that the, with the additional mitigation measures that have been required in the, in the reduction in the size of the project, that this is now less impactful than what was analyzed in the original mitigated negative declaration. And, so I don't think that we have any, any SEQA issues here, and I think they've more than demonstrated that in the analysis presented to the city council. In terms of the use itself, you know, this area had the riverboat there for 40 years or more. The riverboat operated under far less conditions than we're talking about here. It didn't have any of the noise mitigation measures or anything that we're talking about here. So, historically, this site has been used as a restaurant for decades. It's only for the last few years that the riverboat's been gone. So, I find this a far superior project than what we had when the riverboat was there. And then on the, the whole issue of the parking, it's not the burden of this landowner to solve the parking problems of other property owners. That's, that's their problem. So, I find no, no viable issue here dealing with this parking situation.
Please be quiet. Thank you.
And then the last thing is, Mr. Pieter, the intent of the operator's permit, because I, I think that was my idea when we instituted that, was that's where we would get into the alcohol, hours of operation, and things of that nature, and not in the use permit. And it was to provide a mechanism where we could separate the operators and how these restaurants are operated, and keep them separate from the land use issue so that they don't get entitled in as part of a land use approval. So, that's my motion, and those are my comments.
Mr. Pieter?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Selich, I agree with you. I have no problem with that. The hours of operation are already pretty heavily conditioned. Midnight, they cannot serve outside anymore. The doors have to be closed after 7:00 PM. No amplified sound after 1:00 AM, and amplified, obviously, is only inside. The overall restaurant can be open till 2:00. And, and if we need to adjust that because of alcohol sales, the, the operations permit makes sense to me. I did want to point out that condition number 19 to staff says that the sliding glass wall system shall be replaced with fixed windows. That implies to me there are no sliders allowed right now, per the Planning Commission's approval, unless that was conditioned, changed by the Planning Commission.
That was modified. That was the only condition that was, substance that was changed.
Okay, so now the new condition 19 will say, south walls triple glazed, the southerly west-facing glass in southwest corner will have to be closed after, or locked and not allowed to be opened, and the others will operate per the conditions of approval?
That is correct.
I think you guys have done, I think you guys have done a good job, and I think, thank you for the Irvine Company for, for offering these changes, and I think it'll make a significant impact on the life over in Lido, so.
Madam Mayor, I want to make one clarification. So, we, we do not bring back operator's licenses to the council, just so you know that. That's approved by the chief of police.
I understand.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
If I could add one quick item as well, I wanted to note that the additional conditions that Mr. Miller is agreeing to on behalf of the Irvine Company are voluntary, and they're not mitigation measures necessary to reduce the project impacts, that they're volunteering, voluntarily agreeing to those, that there's no need for additional environmental analysis.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Petros?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Having said that, Aaron, they are not required as mitigation measures for a SEQA finding, but they will find their way into our conditions of approval, so we do have discretionary action to implement them.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. One other observation, Councilmember Selich, you said that the applicant isn't responsible for solving the parking problem, but yet, when you read the documentation, in fact, they are. Their requirement for parking is 186 spaces. They're providing 196 spaces, and by virtue of their management plan, there's an opportunity to accommodate the peak demand at 300 spaces. So, I would, I would posit that while they don't have to, they certainly have a plan that's available to address parking issues as they arise.
I realize that, Councilmember Petros. My comment was directed to comments that they should be solving those parking problems.
Thank you.
Any other comments up here? I would just like to make a comment, a general comment, that I applaud the Irvine Company for their outreach to the homeowners, the residents of Linda Isle, and made substantive changes in their original design, and I think that is a model for our community, showing that private landowner, property owner wants to work with the neighboring residences. I know we deal with this. I deal with this a lot on the peninsula, and I commend the company for wanting to satisfy some particular areas, areas of concern. So, let's call for a vote.
No, just before you do, I just want to make one additional comment on that, because I have followed what the Irvine Company has, has done here with the Marina, with moving the walkway away from the waterfront. They have worked very hard to try and satisfy the people of Linda Isle, and I think the people of Linda Isle should be thankful for that.
Okay, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, item number 19, the former City Hall complex land use plan amendments for Lido House Hotel located at 3300 Newport Boulevard. Staff, may I have a report?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, Kim Brandt, your community development director. We just brought this item back to you. This is an amendment to the land use designation, the coastal land use designation for the Lido House Hotel property. We had previously brought to you some suggested modifications pursuant to the Coastal Commission action that you took and approved, and then we found out after your action that we had, had omitted some language from, from your approval. So, we're bringing that back to clean it up for you, and we can go into more detail if you wish.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Nope. Oh, Mr. Petros? Do we have a second? Any other comments? Let's turn it to public. Any comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. Lido Village and Henry Village, where this new hotel we're going, is an area that has a history of overheight buildings. I think it was about 40 years ago that a former city council, sensing the likelihood of a voter revolt, put a stop to those high-rise buildings by imposing a rigid shoreline height limitation and equally firm height limits in other parts of the city. In this case, you're being asked to agree with the Coastal Commission to allow an exception to the shoreline height limit. 65-foot building where our codes would suggest only 35 feet is allowed. The Coastal Commission signed off on this in part because they saw no coastal act issue with the height of this particular building, and also in part because they understood that the exception to the rule had local approval. With regard to the local approval, I would like to say that I have a sense that the citizens of this city are becoming increasingly irritated with what they see as ever more and taller buildings sprouting up in an ever-increasing series of one-off exceptions to what they reasonably thought were agreed-to height limits. I would like to suggest that if that pattern continues too long, the modern council, like that of 40 years ago, may see another voter revolt as the past, last one saw with measure Y. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let's bring it back to the Diaz. Mr. Selich?
Well, Mr. Mosher's wrong. The Coastal Commission granted the height exception because they saw the value, rather than spreading the entire site with buildings, of having the open space that's along Newport Boulevard, is part of the project, and going with some increased height on part of the site. So, that was the reason that the Coastal Commission went along with the height that was submitted to the Coastal Commission by the city.
Mr. Pieter?
And I agree with Mr. Selich and Mr. Mosher there. I, I don't have a problem with the height. I do have a problem with the fact that it's spot zoned, and we raised our own property's height limit, and we didn't raise other property owners to the same amount if they did the same type of things, which I think would be a great encouragement on Lido. I also wanted to take the opportunity to say that, you know, the lease agreement on this thing is still not very good, but I applaud the use and can't wait to see it get built, so, let's move on.
Okay. May I have, any other comments up here? We have a motion. Do we have a motion? All right, let's have a vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item number 20, modify permit parking hours on Margaret Drive. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm not afraid. I would just note that I will be recusing myself because my primary residence is within 500 feet of this action.
Okay. Mr. Pieter, you have a comment? No? No? If we could clear. I still have Mr. Pieter's name there. Okay, any other comments up here? Let's put it out to the public. Any comments? Please come forward.
Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Tony Malum. I live at 2315 Margaret Drive. I'm up here today to urge you to take the staff's recommendation to adopt the resolutions and to pass the ordinance to second reading. We've been, parking has been an issue around the high school since 1960. That's when the first restrictions were put in place. We came to the council in 93 because parking got more and more difficult for us. We got additional help from the council to further restrict the parking. We were told then to work with the, with the city and with the school district and try to resolve the problems that we had regarding parking in the area. We did that. However, it has been unsuccessful overall, and Margaret is unique because it basically is adjacent to the de facto entrance into the high school, plus there's a lighted flashing sidewalk, crosswalk going right from the high school into, into Margaret. So, we end up getting quite a bit of the traffic on and off the high school, plus parking, and we really need the city's help to try to solve this problem. We've been approaching it incrementally. I think this is an incremental step, and we'd really like to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward.
City Council, Jeff Chandler, 2219 Margaret Drive. Been on Margaret Drive for 22 years, so we've been, along with Tony, we've seen a lot of ups and downs with the parking issues in the neighborhood, and particularly on Margaret. We've worked with the school and the school district a lot over the last 20 years. I have three I have three children who went through Harbor. I'm a pro Harbor guy, but when it comes to the parking, it was, it's clear that you need different management coming in and out. You'll see, you know, reactions to our needs vary from time to time, and for the long haul, it's just, it just keeps getting worse from a standpoint of use, trash, and it's really, it's a year-round event or a function, whether the school itself is an issue or the school district leasing out the facility. And I mentioned in my letter there, I noted there in the summers, we used to have the summers off, and I used to live near the beach and I remember having the winters off from the traffic. Well, now, it's, we get the parking year-round, so that's why we're wanting to move to one hour, to force people, not necessarily force, but encourage them to use on-campus parking. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. As I understand it, this is a request to extend the resident-only parking with the exception of one-hour parking from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM every day of the week throughout the year on this segment of street adjacent to the Newport Harbor High School. I appreciate why the residents would want this, but obviously, the rule has no effect unless it's going to be enforced. And as a Newport Beach taxpayer, I would question the effectiveness of paying someone on a Sunday when the school is not in session to drive up and down this little segment of street every hour with one of our possibly illegal license plate reading vehicles to determine if there are any non-registered cars on that street at that hour. I don't think they'll find enough to pay for the effort. And related to that, I would like to point out that in order to enact a residential parking permit program, one of the seven criteria that are in the Newport Beach Municipal Code in section 1268030, one of seven you have to consider, is that the program is needed and the expense of enforcing it because non-residents regularly interfere with the use of a majority of the parking places on the street by the adjacent residents. I happened to stop by there at 5:30 this last Sunday, and I saw only six cars parked there, and I doubt that they were related to the high school because if they were, they could have parked on Irvine Avenue in available spaces next to it. So I doubt you have the conditions necessary or enough of a problem to pay for the rest of us to pay for the enforcement of this, which would seem considerable on days when it seems kind of silly. And if the code enforcement is not going to be doing that, then we have a situation where the residents themselves, like in many other things, it will become completely a complaint-based enforcement, which means the private residents will be able to pick and choose who they want on a public street to get a ticket. I don't think that's a good situation. So those are my thoughts on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Let's bring it back. May we have a motion?
Move the approval of staff recommendation.
Let's vote.
After reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for 2016-3, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, amending subsection 12.68.060B of the Newport Beach Municipal Code regarding the residential parking permit program for Newport Heights and Cliff Haven. The motion carries six zero.
All right, next item, returning to our study session item from the OCTA bus service. So council members, any thoughts on direction to staff and to communicate our sense of the council to OCTA as they consider their bus route proposal? Any comments? Mr. Petros.
Madam Mayor, I want to thank staff and the members of OCTA who came earlier and shared the status of the buses. I think we learned that the service along the peninsula will be maintained while OCTA does improve their efficiency by combining the service along those routes. I think it is very important that the city, in the spirit of mobility, come alongside OCTA as we try and get our Project V shuttle service moving forward to support their efforts and really diligently move forward with ours. So I would suggest if there were any action here, that we send a message to OCTA in support of this efficiency and look forward to collaborative spirit as we move forward with our Project V.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I will move that.
Any second?
Second.
Any comment? Let's vote.
Public comment.
Public, excuse me. Members of the public, would you like to comment? No, I do not see any members of the public. Let's bring it back and we will vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Madam Clerk.
A motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
I don't have a dog in this fight, and I don't really care who ends up moving cars around this city, but I am a consultant, and I end up having to respond to requests for proposal all the time. And when I am given an opportunity to respond to a procurement, I'm going into that in a good faith effort that the responding agency will abide by their rules when they're considering my work. And that is that once the procurement process is complete, the bids are in, the evaluation is made, under those circumstances, and that the circumstances don't change without me having the opportunity to respond to that. I didn't articulate that well or have that sense. I'm not even quite sure. I think maybe the unicorn flew back in the arena here when this was first brought before, but I would like to move to reconsider the towing operation and at a minimum, at least have the RFP or the bids recirculated so that the three bidders could resubmit under a proper opportunity.
So point of order, Madam Mayor, he's not on the prevailing side, so he can't make that motion, right?
Oh, I was on the prevailing side.
Tonight?
No, at the last meeting. I voted in favor.
I think we voted you, Mr.
We'll double check. Hold on, be in the minutes.
Based on the minutes, it appears that Councilmember Petros voted against the item.
Well, my comments still stand.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Wait, wait, wait. Let's just look at the minutes and see what they say here before we make that conclusion because there was a substitute motion that failed.
We can always change the minutes if you like.
Well, that's been done before magically. But then it says a substitute motion failed and the motion was, then we have the substitute motion by Piattar. That's the motion that approved the substitution of the firms and the RFP, and that passed on a, with Mr. Piattar, Duffield, Petros, Muldoon, and Dixon voting in favor and Selich and Curry voting no.
No.
No, not correct.
That's not correct.
Well, that's what the minutes say.
That's most accurate.
Because I voted against it. Are we reviewing this now? All right. I didn't notice.
I just don't want to make a mistake here. Councilmember Curry, we're seeing that the vote was Councilmember Petros, Mayor Dixon, and Councilmember Curry voting no on the substitute motion. Do you see something different?
No, I'm probably looking, Mr. Selich is informing, I'm looking at the sore rate, so I didn't bring my glasses tonight, so I apologize.
Well, nonetheless, my comments still stand, and I would hope that in the future we would abide by the rules we set about procurements.
All right, the meeting, we are adjourned.